Abatement selection quick and then I we wanted before we get online to talk about.
I didn't print them.
I didn't either because I couldn't.
Can we look them up on here? Can you pull your email up here?
Well, hey there, Mary Poppins. Hello. I could I could not open it on my phone.
Anybody get an email in here? Non-departmental top Corey this week.
That's because we're paying out those closings. Hopefully the money comes soon. We did get the other money thing, didn't we? Did you find it or not? Because I was going to say I can look it up.
Everybody get dialed in, okay?
See, this is where I had issue. I couldn't get some of them. You might send it to print to me.
Look, I've been having a hard time opening my attachments.
No, and I I heard there's something there must have been a number last week, but when I used to be able to back in like the first couple of numbers or letters with people's names and all of their contacts. And now it's like.
Yeah. Mine's with my Land Serpent too. I don't think it's a county thing. I guess it's just an Outlook thing. Yeah. Yeah. Where do you want me to print to the?
Uh, print to the um, the Conoco. Yeah, right there.
Leave those up. Those questions, thank you, sir.
Has Corey started? Tyler.
Uh, yesterday we got the five, the first, so yeah, I think they were rolling off today too.
And where was the first one you were just gonna go?
Um, I don't know which order they're going in. They've got, um, vows, so. Yeah, I think we do that. First instance, they have the way he was pressed that it's.
Get dialed around there yet?
Yeah, next week will be first week of December. First of all. Because so it's been such a mess from the from the. The company and Twitter are not communicating or not communicating very well. Now they are finally. They tend to apply a lot of NBD for it. It's working well now, but I I.
Somebody was it giving and?
Yeah, it was just like, oh, oh, you want this information too? Okay, here it is.
Seriously, Tyler?
So we've got that ironed out, but I I just said, I'm gone most of next week and then the week after Thanksgiving, let's just push pause for those two weeks that'll let player title get way ahead of the game. For all the document generation and and all that stuff. Because we got into last week and they hadn't even gotten people to pay off amounts of their mortgage. So we were fighting like.
You can't close if you don't have that.
Get that. And I was just like, what what's the fun of me signing documents with people if they don't know what what how the money is going to shake out? Like, I'm not going to sign something.
That's what the closing's all about.
Right.
That's all they care about in this document. I didn't have time. But I I think we'll take a break here and then come back that first week of December and then there we go.
So when when we write out that check, I I understand that's in a separate division. But when people see this in the mail, should you put, this is not tax dollars, this is FEMA. So because people are going to say, are you kidding me? I think that would clarify because I've already had a few phone calls of this better not be affecting us. Just. It probably every time you write a check. Those are big.
No, they're, you know, I mean.
They're big.
Last week's alone was like one, two billion, three million.
Yeah, that kind of gets a few people excited. They're kind of.
That's all right. It's it's Excel.
Yeah, and there's a couple pages that says need to get a bid, what time the original bid was.
All right, let's get this party started and get Tyler taken care of for now.
All righty.
Uh, any liquor licenses, Carol?
No, nothing. I make a motion to approve the agenda and minutes and the accountables. And there's no liquor.
I will second that.
So all of the minutes looked okay to you guys?
Yeah, they breezed through this morning, but it didn't look too good.
You get a good job.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And what time do they end? Do you have a break each one?
Just to choose, we're just choosing the asbestos contractor.
That I have on here, other than we need to set the we set the public hearing date for the agency one that came in line.
Yeah, we can do that next week. It's not our shit. No.
Um, so your little bid on here is McGill asbestos statement. They, I mean, are. If you if you knock out the two that are disqualified, they're um, half the price of the next one.
Right.
And uh, you know, for how much asbestos is in these houses is really not that much in most of them. So I think. Uh, I'm comfortable with that bid.
Okay.
The details?
Yeah, since none of them were over a hundred thousand dollars for a bid, we we didn't really know what to expect bid wise.
Sure.
Sometimes contractors get one because the team of other things purple their prime.
Right.
Uh, who are they? They're not. So uh, that's within a hundred thousand. Nobody was required.
And I.
So we only have the four, right? That's it?
And I checked up on them. They come out of Omaha. So that's cool.
Yeah, yeah, they're relatively local. I think most of these are, but.
Uh, one comes out of Lincoln, which isn't a big deal. This is the twenty eight two fifty five. Oh, I've got one on mine. Oh, there it is. Sorry.
ABC, uh, they like to provide hardly anything.
Oh, okay.
So I make a sense of that price. That's fine. That means not. Oh, yeah, I would support uh, collecting a little bit with McGill asbestos. I'll try and get a contract done by the end of the week. You got our meeting next week, right?
Yes.
So I'll be gone, but I'll try and have the contract ready.
And they do understand start as soon as possible. Okay.
Okay, yeah, I mean, if we can get the contract signed next week, I don't think it's going to take them very long to get all these.
Uh, well.
And and once we get them signed, the next group is going to be largely must must rest in front of people. We do it all in one.
So we move to make a motion to um. Hire our McGill asbestos contractor for the FEMA buyout.
Yep, we've got a motion. I will second the motion to approve McGill. Is there any discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Anything we need to sign, Tyler?
No.
Okay.
You got it.
Uh, yeah, the only other thing I had was the I think that public hearing and that.
No, not yet.
Put out over. Protocol.
Yeah, but I'll, yeah, I'll give her some.
Our numbers are insane.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, Larry and Julie.
Um, do you have any extra copies of this? They have them. Okay. Uh, weekly report today, uh, record high. We have a hundred and forty-four new confirmed cases in the last seven days. Brings our total case count to six thirty-one. You'll notice we are getting a bigger discrepancy between recovered cases and total positive cases. And, you know, we used to be pretty close. Um, cases were rolling in and rolling off at pretty like speed. Now you can see there's quite a variance there. We're at two hundred and eighty-six recovered. Just under five thousand total tests have been completed. And you see that significant jump in the fourteen day positivity rate. Last week we were at fourteen point seven and this week we jumped up to twenty-two percent. We had one additional death as well. Did you guys get that press release when it came out? I think that was up with us on Friday. It was Friday. We had an additional death. Then you can also see all the statistics for how over time the age groups have been affected and then um, where the cases are in terms of zip codes. Some of the really big case counts that we've been dealing with in the last week have been related to the schools. You remember last time when I came, we had a uh, intervention in place where we were going to stop all extracurricular activities. And so kids would come to school for in-person learning only shutdown. And this is for high school. Yes. And they passed the mask mandate, which we were all pleased for. And then they had shut um, northeast down starting yesterday for a two-week period. And that was not because of students, but because sixteen teachers were out and they didn't have adequate staff nor substitutes to cover that. Um, and we worked with um, Devon and the Iowa Department of Public Health and the epidemiologists and got those two cleared. Over the weekend, the numbers for the high school took a big jump. On the fourth, their absenteeism rate was eleven percent. The fifth, it was sixteen percent. And then the sixth and the ninth, it jumped over twenty-one percent for both days. So the threshold for the Department of Education to accept applications to go to online learning is when absenteeism rate is over ten percent. And community spread is over fifteen percent. But because community spread is over twenty percent, the school can ask for that waiver irregardless of absenteeism. However, they will meet the benchmark with us being at twenty-two percent. And their absenteeism rate is actually at twenty-one point seven six or whatnot. So. You've probably received a notice from the schools yesterday. So um, I think that will go into place tomorrow. It will be closed for a two-week period and then we'll get. Starting tomorrow. And then we'll get the extra whole long Thanksgiving break and then they'll reconvene after that time. So that's the update with the schools. I also wanted to um, give you some updates on our long-term cares. We are seeing some activity at On With Life. Um, I think On With Life has a positive staff and a positive client. We have a couple of active cases right now at Glen Haven. And then we continue to um, work with the GRC and they are not considered a long-term care facility, but their cases are community-based. Right now, they have the GRC, and this is a published report on the Iowa Department of Human Services website effective yesterday. GRC has fifty-four staff that are not recovered and a total of a hundred and thirty-two positive cases over time. And they have forty-nine not recovered patients and ninety-nine total over time. So they've got quite an outbreak status going on at the GRC.
Did you say forty-nine of the of the residents there?
Forty-nine are not recovered residents. Total of ninety-nine have tested positive. Um. Our nurses have become COVID telemarketers. Um, they're just on the phone ten hours a day, seven days a week. Um, there's a lot of talk that contact tracing. Isn't working. The numbers certainly don't show us that it's working. But I just want to share with you that a lot that we are doing at Public Health, we are doing under the direction of the Iowa Department of Public Health. We largely don't choose what we can or cannot do. We are not a free spirit of expertise. We are following very strict guidelines with the Iowa Department of Public Health and and largely what we do are hands of fire. Do you have any questions or concerns?
I think of you guys, when we talk to every day, but we're running down the halls from one physical to another. And now that their kids have to stay home, that we.
Oh, no.
They have to stay.
We're coming into the winter season not well.
And I understand, like she said, a lot of them, some of them, they got the blue bus.
Sure.
But we don't care about that. So that's.
Well. So.
Okay.
Stay the course and keep updating you weekly. Do you have any questions?
So then tomorrow, the high school will shut down for two days. Well, will be all good, won't it, or not?
No, uh, not just the high school. You'll and so the.
To the west is still school?
West and the middle school, um, Glenwood is the building open and that's because um, absenteeism rate is extraordinary low in most of the schools and we have fewer than a couple of pages. So we'll see how that pans out over time.
Well, kudos to them.
Yeah.
Okay. A couple of things. One, uh, the state had a call here um. Last Friday with local emergency management agencies across the state about uh, trying to set up a new personal protective equipment distribution guidance and oversight and and how they're willing to do it. Uh, and this is for um, this is for up and beyond what you can't get locally. You know, they want us to buy local where we can. You know, they want to put us out on our own and try and reconstitute ourselves. But they are willing to help and they have been helping. And this is in areas a lot of times in healthcare environments, long-term care, health, public health departments, things like that. We were issued here several months ago a thirty-day cache of supplies that we ordered. And I basically maintain those and we can draw out of those. What they're wanting to do is resupply that cache of supplies. That we're using critically as we need to. And then uh, but they want to do it more regionally instead of shipping everything out of Des Moines area every time turnaround. So what they've done, they set up uh, nodes around the state. And in our region, there are six regions in Iowa for Homeland Security, Emergency Management, Public Health. In our region, they've actually, because of size, we're in larger regions, there are eighteen counties, they set up two nodes, one in in Pot County. Uh, the oversight of DMA up there, one in Union County under DMA oversight. They'll be stirring resources over the state. And then there was a process that they finally sent to me yesterday that it's kind of like a yes and no triage thing. Did I do this? Did I do that? Here's what I do. And we still have to go into our app, a case called Web Emergency Operations Center, which is a portal, web portal, and put a request admission task on the state as we do now. Uh, but what that does is depends on what route you take down this this path uh, and how it's going to get to you. You still will pick it up to one of these nodes. But it's a process where you're going to take it out of your cache, resupply your cache, or you have an immediate need for additional root supplies that you don't have in your cache. You know, there's types of equipment. So the state's going to work with this, see how it works better, because they couldn't keep the logistics tail of using the state patrol, DOT, National Guard and keep up with this.
So where is there, where is it supposed to be at?
This, I guess plus it's going to be at the uh, fire station in Lake Manawha. Uh, DMA, there's a, there is a eight, five or six bay garage there that the Customs Fire Department has and they've given a couple of bays of those to DMA and they've got their their command vehicle in there and they have some of their resources.
Is that where you go and get when you picked up our stuff?
And the thing is, I don't know how he's going to store nine counties with the stuff the state may push to him because of space. And Union County has a little more room uh, over there in Creston. Uh, they actually moved in, DMA moved into the old National Guard place over there in Creston and rehabbed it, rehabilitated it. So they have a lot more facility over there in storage in in that over there. So we'll see how it works, but this took effect uh, as of uh, yesterday and they're going to to try this process. Um, so we'll, we'll keep in close contact with Public Health and these we're getting from our our facilities around the area because we're still supporting them.
But do they have to hire somebody special to keep?
Now, they're, they're, what they're doing is they're volunteering, they're volunteering user staff at both facilities. The director over in Crest right now, she's kind of by herself over there. I don't know if she's got a part-time, I think she may have a a a specialist over there that works with her now. And uh, and of course Doug Reed's got three other staff up there. So uh, uh, in in, once you get it in place, do inventory control, it's not that hard because once a shipment, you'll be dropped to him and then I basically coordinate with him when I'm going to pick it up. And that's it. And and then the forms I sign and I load back into the portal and I send it to the state. So and that's how we manage receipts and requisitions. And then we just track locally how we issue out here locally. So. I I think it's going to be for immediate need things or on a shopping list they have, which is very small, that has a desperate need for things. In other words, uh, the other, you're either being cut off by your supplier or there's none available. And then you, so you'll dip into a more local, regional cash, which is good for us because it's close by.
Right.
So so that's kind of the new product. They're going to start that.
And who's that for, Larry? Who will benefit from those supplies?
Uh, this is long-term care, health departments, uh, emergency services, uh, facilities like that.
Okay. And isn't there six counties in our?
There's, there's, there's eighteen counties in thing, but there's twenty-three, four, five, six, seven, eight. There's nine in our, it's called District Four A. District Four B has the other nine. And and I think they split it up into two. They didn't do the other districts like that or regions for some reason, uh, because we, I think we're the largest one in the state. That might be, I don't know why they did that. And of course, you, when you go to the eastern edge, we're over in Decatur, Clark, Madison County, and that's pretty far to drive. I had to go from here over to there to fix the supplies up. You know, it's an hour fifteen to Creston. So. So anyway, that's kind of something we're going to start and try. Uh, the other thing that happened yesterday may have something to do with what you were involved with, especially maybe earlier, while back with trying to move about forty-eight pallets of food off the pavement. They're in, they're getting ready, uh, uh, the state sent through your ammo. Uh, this is a USDA program. I think that's what that was. And this is phase four, the unready kickoff. So they're looking for sponsors to take forty-eight pallets of food. And of course, it's a similar shopping list. You probably saw some of this before. And uh, uh, they're, they're wanting um. They're wanting, and I can forward this to you all, they're wanting sponsors, and of course you had to have a loading dock and stuff. And I'm I imagine that's why Glenwood Schools may have got involved in it. They do have a loading dock. And so you can back the semi up and unload pallets. And we can get innovative and use a a skid loader or something, a forklift that loaded, we can find a place to stage. Um, I'm not sure of anybody in the county unless you've heard of somebody that's willing to take this phase four yet. That's a big undertaking.
Storehouse was kind of ramrod it before.
Maybe I'll go down and talk to her because that's a big undertaking. That's a lot of stuff. And uh, so if that's, if that's what they're going to do, then we don't want to miss out on getting this resource, the opportunity to bring this in. There'll be uh, two more after this, it looks like. And uh, apparently this, these resources are coming from, uh, a lot of it out of state. The USDA is is bringing this in. And uh, the state, uh, probably like other states, and it's a way to get food out to people. And they're really not, there's no classification for it, as you said before. Uh, drive up.
Have to show.
Drive up, we're going to load you up. And uh, we want everything gone. The only thing I'm concerned is.
That's the whole point. Do it a gong. So nobody store it.
Yeah, exactly.
Five hundred boxes of food. If you don't give it a three hundred, where's the other two hundred go?
Yeah, the the parishable stuff's tough.
Yeah.
And the the, you know, milk and eggs.
That kind of stuff.
Yeah, the milk is the thing is.
Is this the same as Nesting one?
I think it's closed.
I haven't seen the whole list, but.
It's closest.
Relative, yep. I don't recall seeing yogurt, but.
We're trying to push, what, three, two ounces of yogurt?
Some soup in there last time too.
Yeah. So you get down here, the last pack, you get down to the last pack, the list, the dairy and the protein items, then you're getting in the parishable, right? You got to have something to do it. It'd be nice if we, it could be done and coordinated. You could do it at different nodes in the county. That way the people wouldn't have to go as far to get it. But then that's a pretty good undertaking uh, to try and get it organized. Then you got to have refrigeration. And if you, I don't know, if you do it.
How many did you pass out?
Um, I helped them unload them. I didn't do any of the passing out. But they had like five spots, pull-up spots down there and you could. Pull up, they'd load you up and leave. No inter, no interaction, no nothing. How many? One, two, three, they'd load you up. Standing there.
And I don't know whether the East Mills and whether we want to take this on again for some of the storage part, you know, uh, if some of those parishable least get it until you get it out on site and set the days to do it, then you got to have a volunteer group uh, to do it. And uh, I don't, different nodes around the county might get it out faster. Otherwise, people won't take part in it. I think if we have something like here in Glenwood, then Henderson, Emerson, they may not get to work. Or they just don't think, they think there's strings attached or something. They really don't know what it is.
Can we take some of these to the other towns and?
The thing is, we're going to have to figure out how it's going to be coordinated if we're going to do it. And I I may go down and talk to the storehouse and see.
And you come in and then go out.
Yeah.
Same day.
The same day.
Oh, same day. Exactly.
Yeah. The key is to get it coordinated. Everybody knows what's going on. And when this shows up, then you update everybody any way you can. And then you basically start pushing it out the door, the cur site. So. Uh, it's a great concept. Problem is, it's a lot of, you get a rural county like this, a lot of coordination has to be done.
So you're saying about five hundred boxes?
No, there's forty, they could be up forty-eight pallets, they say in this email this time.
Yeah, there was a lot last time. I didn't count them, but.
But they got rid of the.
Could be. As much as forty-eight pallets. So anyway, that's, that's going on. Um, the other thing that happened yesterday, Otter and I participated with FEMA and and Iowa Homeland Security Emergency Management on a part of our uh, presidential DR forty-four twenty-one uh, project. It was asked to do a three demo project, these are outside the buyout project. Um, it was their, they're being run separately. Uh, the meeting, the reason of the meeting is to go over various government documents and forms and stuff and to sign off on the forms for the validity of the information. So then the state picks up the the baton from now on and works with us, same Iowa. So Homeland Security will. And so FEMA is basically, is basically recovery transition meetings, what they call it. And it's to get us off their back and we're working with local state authorities from now on in the closure of the grant. It was discovered that we probably would need an extension to finish this. And so the state rep recommended that we might advocate applying for a one-year extension out to September two thousand twenty-one because it was a September-type window. That this thing uh, was supposed to been, we've been trying to do this recovery transition meeting for a while. So uh, the state's going to draft something up and get to us for us to massage. Probably have to write up a description of why we need to get an extension. FEMA, the lady from FEMA kind of recommended, well, you might want to um, maybe maybe request longer to make sure that these three properties, I think it's known what needs to be done to them on the demo. I don't know whether there's any investors involved. We're not, I have to check the addresses. But uh, um, they, it's just, they were put in the four oh seven program separately for some reason. So, so.
What? Yeah, yep, yep, yep.
So that's, that's what's going on with that. That was just a transition, a transition accountability oversight. The other thing is, is the uh, I've been working with Julie and and the auditor, Carol, about the cares money. Because I was trying to figure out why it takes so long to get here. So I had given Jill a heads up at Treasurer's Office last week that when she sees something that big come in, notify the auditor right away because uh, she already has a um, uh, project codes for that, revenue project codes for us. So it doesn't get somewhere where it doesn't need to go. And so I just got a text this morning, email from Jill and it's here. It came in this morning. So both these two people know it. And because I know Julie was trying to track that down for us because it was on overdue getting to us. So that's going to give us some relief to us on ensuring that revenue gets entered into the budget in the system for that. Um, other than that. Other than that, uh, we are still getting demand. We, because of the thing at the resource center about, there's a large amount of houses that are what I call lit up. That means they're active. And the resource center is moving people, you know, moving people around, trying to create, you know, little caches of pandemic cells, might I say. So with that, for a while we weren't getting the exact addresses to where these people were. Julie was working really hard with the resource center, uh, leadership and it was getting kind of, kind of being a pain. It was by, we needed that information, but the state sent this procedure up for us to put alerts on these, on these homes. And so it got to the point, we just blocked it, the whole house out. So now I've got about up to seven houses that I've got alerts on. The recent, the rescue people, EMS people, particularly Glumwood, it goes there, anybody else goes there in mutual aid. Because they weren't getting information, whether this is COVID or not, uh, they had, they're, they're burning through personal tech equipment because they have to dress out for it. If they're going to a normal call, it's non-COVID, then they are wearing nitrals, they're wearing a mask. But if they're going to a COVID environment and they're dressing out with gown, suit, uh, face mask, face mask and shield and gloves, the whole nine yards. And all the EMS services are doing that. Well, when you go somewhere where people aren't giving you information, then you have no recourse. But when you go to that facility, anywhere on the campus up there, they're having to dress out. And of course, every time you do that, it's the number of people times the number of, of uniforms and gowns and stuff that you're using. And that means more demand for resources. So that's one thing that's been bothering us a little bit about lack of communication and understanding the need for have that active information. So.
And then are they, are they being quarantined also in their house? They, they're not allowed?
They're moving them to different homes. Julie, you've been working very closely in her staff. Uh, they have set up houses. It's kind of like what Glenn Haven did. They took one house, which I think might be the rehab. And they moved those clients when they bought positive to that house to keep them out of the main house they came from. So it wouldn't spread hopefully. And so that's how they've been managing it, at least Glenn Haven. But we knew that was the house. So that made it a little bit easier, you know? Uh, and we, and they were forthright with public health on getting that names and stuff to us. You know, so it's just part of the process, you know, but, but this thing, uh, with the recent, with the recent increases of positive cases.
We had to, we had to vote COVID people.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the other thing that happened. So we provided gallons for that or so they could do that and be safe as they could, which is, you know, the public, so the public could vote. Uh, the other thing is you probably knew, and your, and your aunt knows went to curbside a couple of days ago.
Uh, yesterday.
Yes, back to curbside. Uh, so that means they probably got somebody in their staff and their short staff over there. So he just, he regretfully had to go back to curbside. And of course, you know, Classic Cafe last week went, went open. But she did, they did kind of make accommodations in there. And, uh, cause they got high back booths and stuff and they could just move some tables. And they're using the bar entrance as the entrance to the cafe, uh, now. So that tells me maybe they shut down their bar, I'm guessing. So anyway, they were very conservative. They didn't want to, but the public was supporting them over there in Malvern quite well, uh, as far as curbside pickups and stuff like that. So. So, uh, I think they're trying to get some normacy, you know, in, into life and stuff in there with, with due diligence. So, um, I, I think this surge is maybe we, we didn't expect it coming, but we had to know it was eventually going to come. And so the question is, what's going to happen after two weeks of like, we'll say Glumwood School this week and their, um, their suspension of anything extra curriculum. Is that going to help clean it out a little bit? Are the students going to understand that we gotta, we gotta be there for our peers a little bit to see until we can get this vaccine out? I don't know. I don't know the answer to this. I don't think we even do.
They're not getting into school, they're getting it after school and more they're quarantining and spreading out. More they're not getting to school, they're getting together here.
The bad thing about it was is that our sports teams recently, we'll say volleyball, I'll use that, just for example. When I see other schools and they're doing their team photos with masks on, I'm seeing teams in Nebraska playing volleyball with a mask, which I don't know how they're doing that.
I don't either.
But they're doing, but they're, but they're doing that, uh, then that is pretty extreme. Uh, but, but it's the perception. When you see in the newspaper and you're seeing all this huggy stuff, and that tells you how well are they as a, in the school environment and as a team environment, doing what they can for their, their fellow team member that were student? And, uh, I don't know, being a part of the solution instead of part of the problem. Cause we don't know what the true solution is, you know? And that's, that's what, at least from my perspective. What is the real true solution?
I don't know. And I just heard, you know, because Portland and some of those places have been so good. Um, they broke out again and they got high numbers there. So, you know, they're back to next to nothing again. Or supposedly they were, you know, doing really well.
They were doing good.
So.
Probably because they legalized cocaine.
Yeah, yeah, they did.
Heroin and something, you could have small amounts of it.
They criminalized it.
Um, the last thing is the school is, uh, I talked to Frank Bachman from operations and, uh, uh, he's, he's getting gap price gouged a little bit for certain things he's got for his facility, custodians, his bus drivers and, and the others should help and the nurses and stuff. And, uh, so the pricing is not bad for some of the stuff and some of the pricing is still high. So I'm taking down to him, uh, some vinyl gloves that we got in for, uh, public health and a few nitrals because of the size. And to help with some of the critical ports of the school that need that until he can get some relief. And I think, uh, um, you know, we're doing every we can to support them, just as East Mills. The state is providing, uh, masks to the schools, their cloth masks. Uh, we got six thousand in for Glumwood last month, uh, adult size because pediatric youths were not available. Now these are available. Glumwood had ordered six thousand adults again, because they had their thirty-day supply. And I, I hit them up again for their thirty-day supply and Devin hit me with six thousand adult and six thousand pediatric. East Mills, uh, had already had two thousand adult. And, uh, they were delivered to the East Mills Elementary Campus. That's where they're doing the resource management at. But they're not moving stuff to the high school. The adult cloth masks fall off of them, the old kids, the East Mills Elementary, they're just too big.
Oh.
And so, so, uh, the ped masks are going to be in next week now instead of this week, uh, from their orders I put in two districts. And we'll get those split out and distributed as soon as possible to them. I think follow-on distribution of those masks will come through the node. Because I'll probably, last shipment came from DOT brought them down. So I'm guessing after this shipment is done, I think this note thing starts at sixteen next week is when they're going to start that process. So we'll see how it works and how much we can tap it. We should have the health offsets somewhere else.
Well, as long as they're not having to wear garbage bags for gowns.
Yeah, Glenn Haven got some of those. I couldn't believe it. It was amazing. But FEMA sent those, not the state.
I know.
Those were FEMA. They came in under an order that two AMs that will make through FEMA and that's kind of what happened.
Thank you.
Please, Larry.
You're up, Paulie.
Holly Marie.
We got a Marie, but that's not one. Carol's like, no.
Okay, regarding permits. This is Carol. Ronnie.
Going on in the county.
Okay. So we are really busy right now with permits and inspections. Um, the numbers are still up. People are still building. Um, a lot of people are trying to get the footings in prior to the weather changing so that they can do more. So Darren has been basically double booked, which is why he's not here right now. He's been double booked from starting at seven thirty in the morning and sometimes until three thirty, four o'clock in the afternoon is our last appointment. So, um, he's going strong. And these are just the permits that we just got, not counting what we already have going on. So that was for the month of October.
Cool.
Wonderful. Wow.
Yeah, good members. I mean, like I said, they're still coming in. Lots of new houses are still being built.
More Shouse housing or is it?
We are having some Shouses. Um, or is one gentleman came and called it a barn demonium.
A what?
Barn, a barn demonium.
With the Shouse.
A Shouse?
Shed house.
A shed in the house.
Oh, oh, okay.
Apparently barn demonium is part barn, part condominium.
Do you live with your sheep then? I guess, right?
In this case, it would have been horses, but yeah.
Have your tractor in and go there.
Mm-hmm.
We just think that. I've been thinking of that. Not a bad idea.
So, I mean, a lot of good. Um, also you see a lot of swimming pools this time of year.
Yeah, I kind of, I was kind of wondering about that.
Okay, those, and that, we've had a lot of in-ground swimming pools go in this year and unprecedented amount. We've never had this many in-ground. But this time of year you see more of them going in because they're all on sale.
Oh. I thought maybe they were going to turn them into ice skating ponds for the winter.
They could. Most of these, I believe, are heated. So you can maybe learn who they are and make friends.
Make friends, yeah.
There you go.
Where's that COVID down?
Less than ten, less than ten friends, yeah.
Yeah, less than ten friends at a time. But yes, so this time of year you do see more. Um, there were a lot going in in September and I think we only had one in October. And then we had a couple more inquiring about it for November, depending on the weather.
Really?
They're on sale, Carol. It's your Black Friday pricing.
And get your, well, you've got a lay, you've got a pond, you've got some pool.
Yeah, but it's not heated, sweetie.
Oh, yeah. Well, can you put one of those heaters from the, uh,
No.
Like a tank heater in there?
Can you imagine that whole dial?
Okay, visuals. All right. In the month is regarding zoning, in the month of October, the zoning board of adjustment met regarding a variance that was granted for a front yard setback. In November, we are scheduled to have two items on the agenda. The first being a conditional use permit for a cell phone tower that is to be placed in the Silver City area. The second item is a review hearing of the Ames Construction Dirt Borrow existing permit. So it's the review that the zoning board set when they approved it. Planning and zoning board, uh, the soil extraction committee has been meeting regularly regarding the soil extraction ordinance updates. The goal with this one is to have the first draft completed for the P and Z to review at the December one meeting. So we're in a little bit of a rush to try to get that. We're just on the home stretch right now. It's been going really well. Um, after it's approved, it will be forwarded to the board of supervisors for their review and approval. But we're trying to, we're working really closely with Tyler on this. So we're trying to do a team effort. Uh, two applications that were turned in prior to the deadline, um, uh, well, and I put two sentences together. I'm not sorry. Two applications that were actually, um, turned in, Tyler's working on the planning and zoning. We'll be bringing those changes to you sometime this month, um, that the planning and zoning commission has recommended, for changes and updates on zoning district amendments. So I think he's got a lot on his plate right now, but as soon as he's able to, he'll be bringing those to you. Um, we also have two applications that were turned in prior to the deadline um, for the replacement of those that are leaving us from our planning and zoning commission. We only had two turned in by the deadline. Um, I would like to request that the board of supervisors review those and either appoint them or interview them so that we can get them appointed before the current P and Z. These are the only ones I've received. And these were received, I didn't receive them. These went to the auditor's office. So I just brought these over from there. So, um, what we would like to do, however, we did have somebody contact us, not the one you're asking about though, Carol, um, after the deadline. However, we've also talked to, but anyways, getting back to these, I'd like to have maybe some appointments made so we can kind of acclimate them and get them introduced to the current commission. And maybe update them and acclimate them on the current projects that we're working on so we can continue hopefully with a smooth process. Um, as soon as possible. But we have talked to Marco with economic development and regarding the comprehensive plan. With all the changes that were made because of the flooding and then just updates, we're going to try to do some updates to the comprehensive plan. Working with the economic development and our planning and zoning. And we've also talked about getting a few citizens that have shown some interest in this process. Maybe have them, we can form a committee, um, for the, you know, different pieces of that, because it does take quite a few of us to work together. Um, we've also, at the same time we're doing, doing that, Tyler and I have discussed updating the entire chapter twenty-seven to coordinate with the comprehensive plan. You know, if there's parts in there that maybe disagree with what's in our comprehensive plan, that maybe we need to review and say, these are some updates that we need to look at and maybe just do some other, bless you, updates that to make sure they match what's, you know, the other updates that we've done recently. Regarding soil extraction, um, thus far in November, I didn't have it much in October to really speak of other than it was, it was less than a hundred dollars in October. Um, in November, we just recently collected a check for four thousand six hundred fifty-eight dollars and fifty cents for thirteen thousand cubic yards, another nineteen thousand dollar check for fifty-five thousand cubic yards. We collected a six hundred thousand dollar check from Ames Construction. We also collected six hundred dollar fines for illegally removing soil without permission or permit, um, in the lowest hills. Um, no issues with the contractor. He's very compliant, worked with us and is, you know, came in and actually tried to get educated on what is permissible and what is, yeah. So I feel like very positive about that. And then I've been notified that there'll be a couple of other checks that will be arriving shortly, um, in the near future for soil extraction. I don't know those amounts.
Did you see that one? Did you, like, share that?
I have that one. We're trying to come get to bottom of it.
Yeah.
So I don't want to really report on that one yet.
No, that's fine. But Jill's got it over in.
Yes, I know. We're, we're working on it. I'm not sure what that is for.
Okay.
We're getting to the bottom of it, I've been told.
Okay.
So that's all I have there. So like I said, if there's other people that are interested in the planning and zoning, when we get to the part where we're creating committees to work on the comprehensive plan, I would really appreciate some volunteers to work with us on that too.
I'll see what occurs. I think she called you that day.
So just, um, go through and see what you think. Any other questions or comments? Here's, that's mine, I guess. Here's the folder for those applications. Let me know what you decide. Um, like I said, I would like to include them in the upcoming meetings, whoever we end up appointing.
We need that as an action item next week.
I would love it if you would, yes. Anything else we need? No questions?
Good.
Okay, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Okay, got a couple of utility permits. Three of them.
Wow, three?
Yeah. Yes, they're all fiber. Um, first one's for Vantage Point. They have a service line going on Ingraham Avenue, just east of Highway fifty-nine. Um, born underneath that minimum maintenance road. Second one's Telcom at five zero eight eight eight, two hundred and fortieth street. And it is born underneath two hundred and fortieth street for service to, um, that address. And the last one's also Telcom and it's for three different services on Hillman Road. Uh, apparently, um, there is some damage, a damaged line, so they're having to replace the service for those three houses. And that's on Hillman, uh, west of Highway thirty-four on the gravel. First action item is pay voucher approval, pay voucher thirty-four, Project R F M, CO sixty-five, Paranoid Four, one hundred ninety Street New Bridge, new P C C paving for the amount sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty-one dollars, forty-eight cents.
Did we do that last week?
No, we did not.
Okay, that number just comes.
It was mainly the paint striping and molding seating. Um.
Had to get down any gritty on that one.
We will just have a semifinal and a final pay voucher left, uh, after this one.
Yay.
We'll work to wrap up this project and get off books.
Ooh, know what to do, boys.
Uh, we did have a walkthrough with the DOT and the contractor last, was it last week? I believe it was last week. Um, and so that's pretty much the last step. Um, and so, that's pretty much the last step until we, uh, sign the semifinal voucher and the completion, which we just need, uh, seventy percent growth, or established growth out of the seating. Kind of what we're waiting on.
Really impressed?
They were happy that it got done.
Completed.
Yes.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve voucher number thirty-four for sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty-one dollars and forty-eight cents.
I will second that motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aight.
Aight.
Right underneath my signature.
This one's got a signature block.
And stay in line.
Pretty small.
Another action item, um, was for awarding the bid for cash drop on the borrowed reserve area near Quick Avenue. But if we do not have a quorum, because we have to have.
Well, I think we can, because I think they're, they're, they're declining.
Okay, so then we do have a quorum, and you're not abstaining. Um, if, uh, Vinton's, uh, bed is being pulled, um, then we only have one bed, and it was two, it was by David Goodman. I would, I would suggest that you guys award the bid.
Is that two hundred?
Two hundred dollars per acre for one point seven eight acres. So, that would be three hundred and fifty-six dollars per year for five crop years.
What's a five-year deal?
It is five-year.
I'd make a motion to approve that. Get a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aight.
Aight.
You know how.
Yeah, probably not.
I think that is a smart choice. Uh, for general discussion, um, we, uh, have recently found a, uh,
Beavers.
Um, a trapper, a local trapper. Um, we've constantly had problems with beaver, uh, dams and, and a lot of times we've cleaned them out, and guess what? They built right back up. And so, finally found someone local, uh, his name, his name is.
Oh, I'll bet I know.
John Mabel.
John Beaver?
Oh, really? Okay, he was not my beaver. I, he was not the beaver trapper I was thinking of.
Uh, but that was down on two hundred and fifteenth street, just north of Norris Avenue. Um, a trap that we knocked, or we cleared out, maybe rebuilt twice. Stop doing this. Um, small charge, small fee. Um, beaver belts aren't worth anything, apparently. So, he does have a charge per beaver and also a setup cost, but definitely gonna be cheaper than, uh, us going down there three times a year.
Yep, yep.
So, we do have another location that, uh, we're gonna have them set up the straps, uh, after this, so. I, I didn't realize beavers were that big.
Oh, yeah, those are very sized.
They get big. They do.
Yeah, so, um.
Think how much corn and beans they eat.
I have a look at it.
They can wipe you out. Oh, my gosh.
It's kind of interesting, a little different. Um, the new shops coming along, uh, you've driven by, see some exterior paving. Pretty much all the paving on the south side of the building, southeast, southeast side, uh, has been poured. Um, that leaves the north side towards, uh, the concrete plant to be finished, they go out to one joint, and then also the parking lot and in front. Um, the weather's slowed them down a little bit. Um, snow, what, two weeks ago, and then now it's rain.
Been a couple of good weeks.
Yeah, it was. Those are, they're, uh, they're chances, but they, they still have some decent weather coming up. I'm optimistic, though, to be able to finish it. Um, inside, interior finishes, they've got the painting done. I mean, it's, it's just the finishing work. You know, uh, they, they've got all the drywall done. Um, so, we're talking cabinets, trim, um, light fixtures, stuff like that. I do have a meeting with them on Thursday. Um, we'll get an updated schedule. Last one was, uh, completion by the end of this month, so. We'll, we'll see how we're doing. Um.
Are we gonna have a superboard meeting there?
No, it's the eighteenth. I don't think you're still gonna be ready, are you? No.
I can, I can check again, but. If these are eighteen.
It's just our turn to host, isn't it? So, what would we have at courtroom?
Um, while we're here, yeah.
We'll see, but I wouldn't plan on it.
Eighteenth?
Yeah. I think everyone agrees with that, but yeah, let's collect, um, city is the one who, no, no. School is the one who does the agenda, so just whatever your funds are for that agenda.
What time of meeting?
Uh, our two new hires should be ready for snow removal. Um, they've, they've gone on their routes with, uh,
Don't talk about that.
They've, they've gone on their routes with, um, road foremen, uh, we know, they know their territory routes and, uh, we, we are still, we have the, the chloride solution mix that, that we are, we, we used it last year, but, you know, another, another thing to try to improve our snow removal. And so, we'll be utilizing that.
Wouldn't they take a special tank for that? I guess I should go down there.
So, we have, we have, uh, two trucks, two old state D O T trucks that have a tank on the truck. Um, that can then, uh, spray it as we're adding material. But the rest of them, um, don't have a tank on the truck, and we spray the, we do have an applicator that we can add it to the materials that going, and it's going into the truck, so.
So, the two go on the main roads of two twenty-first and?
Two hundred and twenty-first street has an old, uh, D O T trap on it. Yep. A little bit larger, bigger blade. The chloride tanks, so. Uh, Kyle or the road foreman and I have had discussions about how any other slight changes that we could make to improve two hundred and twenty-first street because we knew, oh, that's our problem road. Anything we can do to improve that, looking at, so. That's about all I had.
Good.
I'll leave guys do it.
Sounds great.
Yeah.
Thanks, Chris.
See ya.
Authorized chair to sign partnership with West Nishna Batna Watershed Management Authority.
Okay, well.
Shouldn't we have done that a lot a long time ago?
We haven't had him to do that. So, last week, we just did it, and he must have just put it on there. I had the motion in the second last week, so, um, we kind of.
Okay.
Yeah, good stuff. But go ahead, make the motion. Well, that was the one with Reed, but I thought we agreed to just do it, but he must have put it back on the agenda, so.
We'll just do it again.
All right.
I make a motion for the chair to sign the West Nishna Watershed Management.
Oh, no, this is a different one. This is a different one.
Different project.
Yeah, yeah. I'll go grab it. You can find it when I find it. It's probably fall out of the way. So, there, this is the second one.
All right. We'll get a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aight.
Aight. Gets payment fifty-eight.
Uh, right there, buddy. So, what else?
Two thirty-two oh six three. Zero zero.
How much two?
Two thirty-two zero sixty-three.
So, move.
I will second that. Any discussion?
Last week.
All those in favor?
Yeah.
Aight.
Last week, we had one, and that was one of the things I meant to give you to sign. So, I, uh, put your signature up of the amendment. It's like, eh, looks like his. I don't care. It's a copy anyway. Yeah, that's gonna be that one. Okay, so, yeah, I meant, uh, okay, thank you.
Authorized the chair to sign tribal consultation letters.
Yes, this is the five thousand letters right here, buddy, where it says regards. Sign your regards.
Gotcha.
I make a motion for the chair to sign his life away.
I will second that. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aight.
All right. I'll sign those. You?
Yeah, thank you so much.
Fiber contracts. Uh, the reason this is on the agenda is we need to keep this moving. Um, obviously, we're working with Western Iowa Networks on this. Our question is, both parties would like to do the design on it. We need to make a decision on who we want to design it, so.
I make a motion for H and R Green to, uh, be our design. We have a contract that it's signed.
I will second that. Any discussion on that?
So, basically, what we're saying to authorize them to drop a contract?
Yes, and to do the, to do the design.
H R Green?
Yep, yep, which is Ken Demlow's company. Um, there will be some construction oversight, inspection, whatever you want to call it. Um, we may have to address that later. Well, we not may, we, we will have to address that later. But, uh, I think we can work with Ken and Western Iowa Networks on that to see which one would feel more comfortable since Western Iowa Networks is gonna maintain it and probably install it. I don't think it would hurt to have them do it as long as, I just want fiber as many places as we can get it. And if it's in front of their house, I want them to be able to hook up. I don't want the problem we have now. There's fiber in front of people's houses that they can't use. I don't, I understand it sort of, but I don't want that. I want users. I don't want a trunk line to get it to Putt County.
In the, um, minutes, uh, did you read that with Olmstead and Perry? Do you think we still need to do a letter to them, or do you think that's enough authorization in there? Because basically what I said was, um, basically what I said that the board, I want to go grab the other page, um.
Yeah, I'll snap a screenshot of it and send it to him and ask him if it's okay.
Okay.
I think they just need them.
Do you want to see? I mean, do you want, because I don't have their contact. Do you want to shoot it of, do you still have a copy of the minutes? Hang on a second. Let me grab it.
Sure. We need to get it moving. And Western Iowa Networks is moving, so that, that's why they're pushing.
Good, okay. Okay, there's the wording right there. Um, motion by here.
This is a copy.
Yep.
Sweet.
Um, I have something, we can.
We haven't put it on this yet, hold on.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second. We have H R Green do the design for the fiber extension throughout Mills County, the county's portion. This would be with the F R F money. I don't think we're putting any other funds with this, correct? Okay. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aight.
Aight.
Okay.
Let's take a break before we, um, go to the canvas, please.
We'll take a quick break here. We'll be back here in a little.
We had a record turnout. Oh, now, now we're, now we're, okay. We had a record turnout. And no, we only had a few hiccups, but it was easily fixed.
Hey. So, to you guys, what did we end up, you, you know, off the top of your head, what we ended up with, that was not, um, that didn't come back down?
It was maybe like ninety-some that didn't come back out of, out of five thousand two hundred. Okay. So, this is election summary that's gonna go to the state. And then, if you want to look at all of it, I have the rest of it here for us. Nope, it's just a one page. And then this is if you want to look at. Yep, and that's the breakdowns for everything.
And we did have the one position that was with the write-ins for the soil and water conservation was the only actual.
That was the only write-in, yep.
And so, there was a gentleman that had twenty-one votes, um,
Out of, I don't know how many thousands.
Yeah, so, uh, we contacted in him to see if he was willing to serve if he.
This is the one you're gonna kill your arm, because those are all need to be signed. That's the other one. And then we go to the certificates.
That's one I, I think, isn't it, that sign those?
Well, it says the chairperson in line. I mean.
Oh, usually the certificate's only signed by the, well, maybe they changed it now.
This came from the state, state side, so.
Okay. Here's this. Sorry.
Did you have the sign letter, the back page of the Indian letter?
Well, I did, but I'm trying to find it.
Oh, the back pages that he's signing?
Yeah, those are still here.
Oh, you haven't signed those yet, okay. Am I supposed to do something with these? Am I supposed to hang them up?
No, I just thought maybe if you guys wanted to look at them, that was the latest and greatest. Because I think Jackie was asking a question about, you know, hospitalization and that sort of thing.
I'll take that next one.
Can I?
You want to, you can start signing these. Sign your little life away.
Okey-doke.
And this one. But the ones that are paper plucked like that goes to the state, so.
Oh, I don't sign much of them.
Well, you, now you gotta go down, down, it's a two-page.
Oh, that's it.
That one's a two-page. That's the only one that's.
There we go.
That's the only one that's two. Help you up, do all of them.
Oh, okay.
Because you.
All right, Lori, so these go to the state. Then what do they do?
They do, in their state canvas. Now, they have to do a state canvas of all ninety-nine counties. And for each of the president, the senate, and then the state senate and the state house. They do a, they do a ninety-nine county canvas. I think that's.
We have to get ours, yeah, that's why we have the deadline of today. Then we do our post-election audit on Thursday morning. Um, we had to note, we're notified the political parties, if they want to watch. We have a group that will be counting by hand. The state shows board one for us. So, those ballots will be hand counted by the group.
Just to make sure that the machine count are the same. So, hopefully, it does. It's just that one page.
It's just that, yep.
It's just that one page, yep, because that's the, that's the canvas, or for them. Oh, that's the winners.
You don't need to sign that, that was just for me to put in the book.
We've got a motion to approve the.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
The canvas.
I make a motion.
I will second that, we've got a motion in a second to approve the canvas of general election, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright.